Morning, Karina.
Sounds like we have an echo.
Yeah.
Okay. Are we good now? I'm going to call to order this PEC work session. It is Friday, July 19th, 2024, and it is 9:05 a.m. I'm going to ask Commissioner Beck to call roll, please.
Commissioner Burke.
Here.
Commissioner Taylor.
Here.
Commissioner Armio. Commissioner Manus.
I am here.
That's good. Commissioner Brower, here. Commissioner Klosis Serge.
Here.
Commissioner Inman. Here. Vice Chair Correa.
Here.
Chair Gibson.
Here.
Secretary Beck, here. We have nine present.
So the first item on our agenda is to provide input regarding new school applications, reminding commissioners, this is a letter that goes out to the schools. If there's any additional concerns, and those concerns, the school will respond to in August at our hearing. But once again, the responses, they're being asked to respond based on what is in their application, not new information. It's not their second bite at the apple. So I'll open it up. Do we want to do by school, school by school?
I'm gonna switch.
Okay. So based on input hearings, let's do Waldorf. It's not, it is Sun. Sun Mountain Community School? Sun Mountain Community School. Right. Yeah, we're just populating comments, so there's nothing to look at. The, just asking commissioners, is there anything else you want the school to respond to from that application that wasn't brought out either in the capacity interview and the feedback? And the schools were able to respond to the capacity interview and/or the community input hearings?
I'll just clarify that the letter contains every does not meet and every approaches from, from the peer review.
Commissioner Beck.
I just have a question. Director Chavez, when, when do, what's the timing of the final recommendation from you?
August 2nd.
August 2nd, okay, thanks.
I'm gonna add one, because I was gonna ask it that day, but we were kind of limited at towards the end there. Because they have this incredibly unique model, which is quite interesting, but I'm just, I didn't see anything that indicated why the applicant felt that the state assessments were the most appropriate for their population. So if they could just talk, talk about the process that they went through to make that decision as to what short cycles they were gonna use. Okay. Next, oh, sorry.
Okay, and so, I just want to understand process. So you're having brought that up, Karina, then you're gonna communicate that to the school? Is that what happens?
It goes to my letter.
It goes to your letter, got it, okay. All right. Thank you.
Actually, when we're done with this, I'll go ahead and move them over so you can see what they look like, but the letters are drafted. So we were, we had two places to fill in. Any comments by CSD? I'm not hearing any. And I'm adding one question from Commissioner Gibson.
You're on looking at.
Well.
I can move them if you want to see me type, that's fine. You want me to do that?
They're still in draft form.
Yeah, okay.
Commissioner Bert has her hand raised.
Commissioner Bert.
Yeah, I'm, my question's gonna be about, I would like to get a better understanding of specifically the outreach done outside of the prior school community. So it being separated out as to the input that they receive from the people that were currently at the former school versus people who've never attended this school.
You know, I think I'm gonna tag on to that a little bit and include tribal reach out.
You want a separate question?
No, I think it can, I think it could be included in that.
Got it.
Okay. Next is multilingual. Commissioner Bert.
I just wanted to get more specifics about the exact level of communication that happened with the tribes in the area. I feel like it was unclear exactly what kind of happened with the tribes.
Um, Becca, is that outreach to the tribes, or is it something more broad?
Yeah, outreach or communication, like, I, like, I heard that there's maybe email some, but I don't know if there was ever like a meeting ever held, a phone call ever, like, any actual back and forth communication? Or was it just, like, one way out? And how often did they do that one-way-out kind of thing?
Actually, Sun Mountain wasn't, wasn't the first school. Equip was the first community input hearing that we did. Yeah. So, but does, does anyone have anything in addition? Or the Brenna Leo applicant? All right, let's go back and equip.
Does he have anything?
All right. No one? Okay. So that leaves us the last one, which is Sacramento Mountain.
Move them over and ask the commissioners.
Okay. Director.
Chair Gibson, commissioners, I would like there to be some questions regarding Section G1, Student Recruitment and Enrollment, which talks about the school sending out direct mailers to students within a particular zip code. I would like for you to ask details about the number of individual students that received them and copies of the, the mailer that went out. I would just like more details on that.
Could you repeat the section?
G1?
G1 Outreach and Recruitment Plan.
Maybe to expand on that, Karina, why was that particular zip code chosen? Alamo Gordo, I imagine, they have several zip codes, right?
That's a great question, what, how they chose the zip code.
Yeah.
Was it closest to the potential location, or were there other factors taken into consideration?
Do you want the question to be behind the selection of one zip code versus many, or, or of that one zip code?
I think the question was why.
Why that one?
Use that zip code and not others.
Yeah, why one over the other? And especially in the, because this came up a lot in the input hearing, when considering the whole DEI issue, which is such a loaded term these days, but just the idea of inclusivity and reaching out to different communities within Alamo Gordo.
So, Hattie, do you want, there is a section for CSD, there's also for commissioners. Do you want this question in commissioners?
It can be in either, or included, it's both CSD and commissioners had.
Okay, I'll just reference the question.
Okay. Along that same line, I'd like a, a little bit further, more information on the transportation issue, because I believe that location that had been identified was walkable, but I'm not sure what that, what that walking community looks like. So it's like, who is in that walkable community? And who is being excluded from that? I, I don't know. I mean, I don't know Alamo Gordo well enough to, to know that, but, you know, the, Alamo Gordo's pretty big, so I would imagine a walkable high school really limits the opportunities for many. And that goes along with my other concern, which is the reach out to the tribal community.
Do you want it similar to what Becca provided, outreach to and communication with tribes? How many times did they reach out?
Right.
Okay.
And not just how many, but what was, you know, what did it look like?
Sacramento.
Okay. We good?
Sacramento.
Okay.
Sacramento.
Yeah. So, in we, in going back and looking at the application again, I did note that there were some significant portions of the application that had been cut and pasted from a prior applicant's answers. So I'm wondering how that serves the school, when it's not, it's a, it was an applicant with a very different model. And in particular, the special education section, in the, in the response on how they were going to serve their special ed students, the cut and pasting identified a specific thing that this other applicant absolutely does do, that the, in the, in the rest of the application from Sacramento, they never indicated that. So it's like, how are you going to do that when you've never said anywhere else that, and it was a, it was a specific reference, in this case, to a device that was going to be used, that was never, ever mentioned in the application? But that's how they're gonna service special ed students, because they cut and pasted it exactly from the prior applicant, without even looking. In a couple of other cases, they changed a couple of words. I'll acknowledge that, but they didn't change the meaning. And in the last section on ESSA, it is absolutely word-for-word, they didn't change a thing. So, you know, it's a, I need them to respond to, how do you do that and serve kids adequately through your program? Director.
I also noted many sections where it's verbatim, if not a few words changed. In the section regarding student lottery admissions, for example, on page 178, they talk about collecting birth certificates. And so I just want clarification on that process.
I'm sorry, what, to birth certificate?
They, they talk about collecting.
Collecting.
Birth certificates, so I just want to verify if that's what they're thinking that they would do. And then I think we should ask them, again, about identifying English learners and what their process would be, just to explain further on that. Because I think the school, whose application they borrowed from, is a K through 12 school, and this is a high school, so there's very different processes.
And once again, we need to be clear that we're not asking schools to provide new information. It's, you know, this is what you did in your application, so how do you feel that's gonna best serve your population when you cut and pasted from someone else's plan? Not fix it and come back with a new idea. Commissioner Brower?
Chair, and thank you so much for sharing that, this information. This is something that I noticed as well. I have a question. And were there any citations in giving credit to the said school? I didn't see any, but I don't, I wasn't sure if there was anything that happened in the community input hearing, or anything of that nature, because I, I was, that's just a follow-up question, that's kind of ancillary to what we're doing.
I remember reading somewhere, and I don't read, and I tried to find it again in the application, and I couldn't find it, but I remember reading somewhere. Maybe it's when they submitted it and they included something, but they did thank the school for sharing the application. Well, every application that has ever been submitted to us is on our website, so there's no, like, oh, thanks, you know, you've got a secret sauce. Every application is there, and certainly you can read them, and you can grow from reading the applications, but the plan is supposed to be theirs. So there, I did not see any credit given. Director?
Yes. Chair Gibson, Commissioner Brower, commissioners, on page 225 is where the school thanks.
Oh, okay.
The Explorer Academy Rio Rancho for the use of the application, of it for guidelines, is how that reads, which is what prompted me to take a look at the two side by side and take note of the exact cut and paste in multiple sections.
Anything else? Okay. I guess we're, we're good.
Could I just, could I just clarify with Director Chavez about the birth certificates? Does it stay with the purpose of, of that is?
They mentioned collecting birth certificates at the time of registration.
Or, or.
Registering students.
That they're a child that was born?
I mean, that's, the question might be, why are you collecting birth certificates from high school students when you register them? Because my understanding is you don't collect birth certificates from anybody. You look at birth certificates to ensure that kindergartners are five years old by the date that they must be five years old in order to enroll in public education in New Mexico, but nobody collects birth certificates.
And I agree. You might ask someone, if you thought that person was 30 and they're enrolling in high school, you might want to see their birth certificate, but you're not gonna collect it and somehow keep it somewhere, yeah? Or do something.
I think it's common practice. Every new school I've ever put my children into have always asked for birth certificates.
Look at them, Commissioner Bert, or.
Submit them with their registration information.
Yeah, you, you, you do look at them, you don't collect.
But you, but I think the.
You have to give them somehow. I mean, I submit them online, like, I just give them a copy. I, I don't think it's an uncommon practice, like we're mentioning. That's all I'm, it's very normal for me as a parent to do that.
Interesting.
Okay, thanks for that. Are we good? Okay. We're on to number three, discussion and update on the performance framework template and status of posting of corrected templates on the PEC website. Oh, I'm sorry.
Is this appropriate? I'm going back, I'm sorry. Oh, Sun Mountain. And because also the issue of recruiting and diversity came up, is it appropriate to ask them, and we obviously made it an issue, so is it appropriate to ask them, between the date of our input hearing, what steps have you taken between the date of our input hearing and your being here today to address the concern of?
So I'm gonna say, from my perspective, no, because we're, we're voting on the application, so that the, for schools to come and say, oh, we heard this, and now we've changed all this, the vote is supposed to be on the.
They haven't changed the application at all, they just, we expressed a concern and they are letting us know how they're addressing the concern.
No, no. We're asking them, how in their application is this addressed? We're not asking them to give us additional new information. We're asking them specifically for how they're, because often we hear from applicants, well, I answered that on page 222, they said I didn't answer it. So they have the opportunity, because they've heard all these concerns, to now show us in the application where this was fully communicated. But we're not, we're not giving them guidance on how they can change their plan and come up with new.
But I, I don't think that's been the case whenever we were at the community input hearings, because I'm, I can honestly recall that some of these applicants provided information that was additional to what they had in their application.
You mean verbally or provided in writing?
Verbally.
Well, I think through explanation, you're probably right that they do. They expand a little bit. But the notion that now we're going to, so, so I'm gonna reference two things. With the capacity interview, applicants had an opportunity to respond to that. The problem that came up, which was not appropriate, was some of the applicants went back and kind of rewrote their application. They heard what the community, and then they completely changed it. Here's a whole new budget. There's, and it, and it unfortunately ended up in Google Drives, which we should not have seen, because they should not have been able to provide that to us. And the call came to me, and I said, no, they don't get an opportunity to do that, but it was still in those Google Drives. So that at the community input hearings, there was some confusion, because I was looking at a budget, and then Commissioner Manus was looking at a different budget and said, no, it's here. And it's like, no, it's not, it's not in the application. So this is not, our vote is supposed to be what they put on the app, what they put in the application, and the community input hearings does provide the school a little bit more opportunity to expand on what is in that application. But the responses to the analysis of the community of the capacity interviews is not to allow the schools to now reimagine their school, and neither are these letters supposed to give the schools an opportunity to change the intent that was in the original application. And I know it's a fine line. Director.
Chair Gibson, there was one applicant that, that literally wrote rewrite, and we did send it back, as you recall, maybe not all the commissioners know, we sent it back to the school saying, we can't accept a rewrite, please remove that and send it back to us. So that, there was one applicant that, that wasn't clear about the response to the peer reviewers, because that's when they had the opportunity to write something.
Well, but I'm gonna reference the example I gave. We were sitting at the community input hearing, and Commissioner Manus was looking at a completely different budget than I was. Because I was looking at the budget that was on the website, he was looking at the budget that was in the Google Drive.
So, so in that instance, thank you, Chair Gibson, for that. So, so the process we used for submitting applications was to have schools upload the applications into the G drive. And since they uploaded them themselves, they were the owners, whoever is the person that uploads is the owner, and they went in and edited things. There was no way for us, we tried to eliminate their access to the documents, so they had the ability to go in and edit that. And there is a date and timestamp, so you can see when that action occurs, but we could not stop access to, and so you're, you're right. We had posted, we had converted to PDF and posted to your website, so it could be that that what was, was different from what was in the G drive if somebody went back in and edited. Now, as for the community input, the written input, at first, I thought that we would combine it all into a PDF and send it to you. We've never posted it on its own on your webpage, but we had so many responses, especially from one school, that it would be too lengthy of a PDF to, to email to you. So that's why we gave a link to the G drive once again, and we were careful that we were the ones that uploaded and limited access to that folder. When we have epicenter next year for the new applications, I think that there's gonna be controls built into how that works.
Could I ask one question about language, about students being able to walk to the school? Like, what, what type of student? I, I don't quite know how to put the wording for that one.
Well, I would, I'm gonna say, it, does it, or how does it limit opportunity for students if it's, if they can't provide that transportation? Because I don't know. I don't know the location.
Say that, say that again.
How would. How would having a walkable high school? No transportation the first year limit access for students? Because once again, that could be that I'm assuming it's that same targeted zip code. But I'm not sure.
Why would having a walkable school limit access? I don't I.
Well, if without the transport. So without the transportation, and if it's housed in in this area, I don't know who you're potentially excluding because they can't walk to the school.
Isn't doesn't the head, isn't it like a mile that people should be able to walk or what do they consider that radius?
It is.
Diameter radius.
Then if you're outside that, you get bus transportation. If the school's not going to have bus transportation and they house it in.
Have to rely on some walkability.
Right, they're relying mostly on walkability. How how is that going to be because they specifically said, we want to house it here because kids can walk because we know kids can walk to the school. But then where are all those other kids, especially if you're looking at reaching out to Holloman folks? Those people aren't walking. You know, so it's I I don't know if it's that same zip code that they're focusing on. I don't know.
Can I ask a quick question? So I did. I got it on. Okay. On the it appears to me that before this year, when transportation has been mandated, right? All charter schools basically relied on parents to bring their kids to the school. And in the first year of a charter school's existence, all I'm asking is it what they were proposing basically was what all charter schools used in the past. They're proposing doing that for the first year. Am I correct with that?
Yes. Except we have had conversations with schools about where they were locating the school for access for the most opportunity. So that I don't know where they're proposing the school and who they're looking at being able to walk and who they're potentially excluding because they may not be able to get there. We have had conversations with schools about the limitation of not being able to bus.
Clearly, I mean, I it's.
Yeah. Where you're locating, you know, without being able to bus, who's going to be able to access that school reasonably?
I guess all I'm asking is, wasn't that typical in the past?
And we've asked it.
Okay, and the second thing is we're during the community input hearings, they they heard loud and clear that that was a probably too expensive of a facility. And and what my concern is, is that we're making a judgment on a proposed facility that may not even be in the picture anymore. So they it seems like to me they have that that we can make it, we can't make assumptions on where that facility is going to be located when they had several other places that they could locate to that they didn't like as well, agreed. And but it was made pretty clear to them during the the hearing that that was probably out of their league. So I I just wondering if we make too big a issue about that specific location and that isn't even in the picture anymore.
So I will expand it as we have with other schools. All of your possible proposed locations, they have to answer that as we have with other schools. You know, but if you're focusing on just one, then then you need to answer to that one. You know, but if you've got more, then tell me what what does that plan look like? Because honestly, it doesn't matter. We can make something really clear, but they can still be laser focused on something. So I, you know, until they actually cement a location, we obviously don't know. But I think the questions lead to our ability to look at capacity for them to be able to respond and how they've planned things out.
I'm going to move the letters into the working session so you guys can take a look at what they look like. Let me know if you want to change language.
Are we good now? Okay. So number three, discussion and update on the performance framework templates and status of posting corrected templates on the P C website. And Deputy Director has some information.
Thank you, Chair Gibson and Commissioners, yes. The Deputy Director has some information that you will not be thrilled to hear. Dr. Faulkner and I did a very thorough review of one of the templates with all the links and all the tabs and all the and Dr. Dr. Faulkner found one portion of the template, and this applies to all of the templates, where a calculation is different than what is described in the business rules. And rather than the business rules aligning to the templates, the templates have to align to the business rules. So she and I will be meeting with Dr. Ernst, who developed the templates, to clarify what the discrepancy is between the business rules and the template. And then Dr. Ernst will have to correct the templates to align with the business rules. And then Dr. Faulkner will have to test them, make sure that they're okay. And by the August meeting, and I know you've heard this before, we should have them all finalized for all schools and all tests.
Can I just ask a clarifying question about the Accuplacer template? And where are we with that? I've had no additional communication about that template.
Uh, thank you, Chair Gibson. Yeah, the school has been because of vacation, we we haven't clarified yet, but but we will.
Thank you, because I've had a question brought to me about the possibility of a school renewing that may want to use it. So I wanted to be able to be clear because I appreciate their, you know, forward thinking and trying to get, you know, some work done on this.
Yes.
So but I did recommend to the school that they contact the director and or Dr. Faulkner to try to.
Yes, which which school is that?
It was Los Montañas.
Okay. Thank you.
They're they're in the process of looking at option three. So they and they do use Accuplacer. So they thought it it could possibly be something that they could expand on with their school. Thanks. So any questions? Okay. Discussion of a closure checklist and its implementation.
The documents in your working session is a cleaned up version of the discussion that you had last month. There was a note about what to do if there is a lease purchase agreement. I just added that section to the section of leases so that that'll be addressed either way. So that is the only kind of technical change. You discussed it and that's just how I addressed it. I can flag that specifically for you, though. It is added. Number three, facility lease or lease purchase terms. I think it's going to really vary if on what the lease is or what the lease purchase says. So that's where I added it. Everything else was just accepting what you had done last last time.
Discussion of options for indicators of distress. Sorry. So I think, oh, sorry, Commissioner Burt.
The only thing I noticed is there's at the end, the primary points of contact, there's a lot of employee emails, which obviously is helpful, but I just want to make sure that as those change, as people come and go, that we don't have to come back to this all the time. So either putting that this is just a separate page, like the primary points of contact, just put them like completely off of this template and it can be a separate thing. Or I don't know if there's just a way we in our in approving this that we make it to where any updates to these to any of this, any of these contacts can be made without coming back to us.
Chair Chair Gibson, Commissioner Burt. May I just say I totally agree. Good catch. In fact, several of the people that are there are not.
Right.
Employed at the P E D.
So I don't know if it if I don't know to. Yeah, maybe exactly. Yeah, just put like who it is and then you guys can just update the emails and actual people. But if you put like who like what their role is, and that way that's like kind of the part of the template, but cool. That was the only thing I saw.
Thanks. So on to indicators of distress. I think my recommendation is that the Subcommittee for the Indicators of Distress, we have to meet. We need to look over the draft survey that Missy put a lot of work into to see if there's any any changes that we would like to put forward to the commission. And I think we need to put this on our next work session because I think it's really important if it is something that we're going to. And I think this is the direction we've indicated. We want to go in that we wanted to go to the boards for the boards to use as a as a working tool for themselves and providing communication with the Charter School Division so that we can give the schools the support they need through looking at that self assessment, not that we're looking at it and making judgments on it. But schools are being honest with their answers and they can be directed to supports that they need based on the responses that they've made on that. But we need to make sure that that survey tool is going to serve us well. So that I think the Subcommittee needs to meet and then it needs to go on our next work session so that we can look at it, fine tune it, and then we can have our first and second reading on it and then vote on it at the following month. So that's any questions? So Missy, I am going to ask, or even the Director. I know at the June meeting, we did give a school that was here that survey to ask them, you know, to as a suggestion to take a look at it. Have they.
Commissioner Gibson and Commission, I have not sent it to them yet. I wanted to clean it up and I got distracted with other things. We'll send it on Monday.
Okay, and I know they were taking July off. So they didn't have a lot of time to look at it. Well, I but they did take paper copies of it, I believe. I thought they had a paper copy in their hand.
I wasn't here, but we do have a good one that we had prepared for the conference. The survey that that was sort of.
That's the one that Missy worked.
New Mexico eyes. Yeah, Missy and I both worked on it.
Correct. Oh, Commissioner Mendes?
The only thing that I wanted to add or ask about the about this, and we could probably discuss it further on a Subcommittee meeting, is the I know that they're talking about the you know, the the second phase of indicators of distress with the A game. And so I don't know if we are going to continue working on that, but I think that that's something that we probably should. I know that they've hosted office hours several times already. But I don't think we as a Subcommittee have discussed that yet. So just wanted to throw that out there so that we can, if we need to keep doing more work, that we could all figure that out in our Subcommittee meeting.
Yeah, and thanks for that. I mean, I kind of assumed that we were moving on. But yes, we'll have to discuss it. And yeah, I saw that email for the office hours. That's still with the first round, not into the second round. But we will put it on the agenda for the Subcommittee meeting so we can have a fuller discussion on that. And I think I'm going to contact them because I don't know what that second phase actually looks like.
That that was the the piece that we we got. They gave us the the papers. And I think that was at the our last meeting, the more the the morning that we left, Friday morning in Chicago. And they were asking us, I think, more of the implementation side of it. But that's kind of where where things fizzled out.
Yeah, yeah. So thanks for that. And I'll try to get some additional information because I don't know what you know, the first round, we knew what the absolute commitment was for, you know, X meetings and you have to be live at this point in time. I don't know what that level of commitment is for the second round. So I'll try to get that information.
Chair Gibson, Commissioners, I I think it means showing up at the convenings, which are virtual from here on out. Maybe there's another one in person next year. But we we committed, we went to Chicago, we're using it. My understanding is that the conversation was there's two ways to use it. One, as an authorizer and you collect data aligned to it, or two, as a tool for schools to use for themselves. And so maybe what we need to do is a write up on how we're approaching it. And and the very things that you said, Chair Gibson, about we're not looking at the results because we want it to be a tool where they are self reflecting and completely honest about their responses. And hopefully taking the type of action that we want for them to take so that they're in good shape and addressing the indicators of distress themselves. Because we all know these eventually end up turning to a finding or a poor rating on the performance framework if they're not addressed.
Anything else? Okay, we're on to number six. Discussion of clarification of P E C rules on reimbursement for virtual meetings and conferences. We talked about this last month, that our rules of procedure were in a little bit of conflict with statute. Because it was all understanding when the last time we did the rules of procedure that the virtual meeting had to be four hours in order for compensation. That is not the case. So that we need the our rules of procedure to simply say in compliance with statute. Sure.
So there's a red line version, six point one. I'll just quickly go through the changes. We had, when you previously looked at the rules of procedure, you hadn't promulgated your rule. So I referenced that in the rulemaking authority. The second thing that I that we wanted to clarify in addition to the making sure that these this document is works with statute is you have a statutory duty to investigate. to investigate nationally recognized principles and standards. You do that by going to all of these, many of these conferences, you do it in other ways. It is a duty that you have, it is a task that you are assigned. You actually discuss who's going to go to these conferences, you bring back that information. So, um, I have just put in here, um, and Bridget's, I think highlighting it now, this section two, that, um, that it is one of your duties, you are, you do comply with it, you are complying with it. And then, um, Chair Gibson has asked for it to be a standing item on the PEC agenda. So when you come back from a conference, you will bring back those national best practices. My thinking is that that is going to give you also the ability to confirm to DFA that that was a required statutory duty that you have for reimbursement. Then the section that clarifies the, the reimbursement. I'm not finding it unless it's way, way down. Um, it's on page 11 and 12. I just, I did, I just thought it might be easier to identify, um, exactly which ones. What are the, um, functions that you're reimbursed for under, under that act? Like I've got an extra and in there. And I've added those national conferences and that's, that again is the statutory language. Um, that is a cleanup because you already said you were going to be paid pursuant to the Per diem and mileage act. Um, it was just inconsistent. And then I just cleaned up a couple of other things as you go down that, just reading through it, I thought we could clean it up a little bit.
Yes, I, I think that, um, Consuelo, if you haven't looked at this document and, um, taken into consideration what you need to have in place in order to have the reimbursements you submit come back. For example, I thought that one of the things that you need is, uh, an agenda for any of the meetings. I don't know if that is in here already or if there's a need to insert something that says that an agenda would be created. Cause I know that there's lots of, um, Subcommittee meetings, for example, and we're, we have a process, but I don't know that it's always followed, um, that the subcommittees have a written agenda that could be easily sent to Consuelo to accompany the reimbursement.
That's section D on page 12.
So. So I'm required to provide an agenda and attendance sheet.
We've already, I think, made that clear that if there's going to be reimbursement from a Subcommittee, that an agenda has to be submitted.
What do you, what do you mean you need an attendance sheet? That they attended or that every person that attended the conference or what do you need?
Everybody that attends, um, a Subcommittee meeting.
There has to be an attendance sheet for the Subcommittee meeting?
And usually if I receive a claim form, I'm, put a list together of people, I do an attendance sheet.
Okay.
Well, maybe.
On the claim form that we submit to you, people in attendance. It's on there.
Yeah.
So.
Even if we have.
Cause I know the agenda that I ju, that I just did for a Subcommittee meeting, it listed the people that were on the Subcommittee. True. So what I would need to do is simply make a notation that they actually were present.
Kind of like minutes, like very.
No, I'm not doing minutes. We're, we'll do the agenda and I've got no problem with submitting on the agenda that I'm doing a checkmark that they were there, they were there, they were there, plain and simple, that's attendance. But minutes aren't, we, we're submitting an agenda. But I don't think I want minutes.
We don't do minutes for EC meetings, for example.
No. Yeah. So, but an agenda, like I did, I did not put, I did not check off on it, these people were actually there. I put the, you know, who was attending. So I will, um, I will modify that. Commissioner Beck?
Yeah, I got a question, probably this is for Julia. On, uh, page 12B1, um, uh, says the business conducted for the purpose of fulfilling the obligations of the Commission. So as an example, I went to a, um, Edgar Allan Poe Festival at School of Excellence and the secretary was there and some of the other people from PED were there. And they had, uh, what do you call, a, um, a leaflet of what it was, so that's the agenda. Would that be valid under B1 or is that too loose of an interpretation for B1?
So I'm going to say in our rules of procedure, and we, we had a robust discussion about this, that it's kind of like the legislature, if they go and do, if, if they go to, you know, a community meeting, they don't get per diem for that. That's considered kind of like your constituent.
That's just what we're supposed to do.
Right.
Okay. All right.
So that graduations and things like that, um, you, you go to the school to, you know, even if you're invited to an event, that's not something that we reimburse for per diem. It's only conferences, subcommittees, um.
Okay, I got it.
Your, uh, liaison on, on subcommittees, that's, uh, because you've been assigned to do that. Absolutely. But once again, um, you volunteered to do that. So that's, you know, if, yeah, yeah. But you're absolutely right. It's, um, it's far more. Correct. Yeah, yeah. But if you look at a Senate district, it's, it's not nearly as large as many of ours are, but it's, it's still, they can, you know, especially down by me, you know, those Senate districts span, you know, multiple counties as well. So that it is what it, you know, that is what it is. So, um, yeah, I know.
I, I did want to say that under your rules of procedure, you need to consider it twice. You're considering it at this work session and you're considering it this afternoon. That is twice. So we have put it on for voting, kind of for two reasons. One is these are technical kind of cleanups. Yeah, um, but it is there for voting on this afternoon and that is consistent with these rules of procedure.
Any other?
Chair Gibson, could Ms. Barnes clarify? I was looking at something and Director Chavez said that there has been a change that that the Commission only needs to look at it twice, at a work session and a meeting? The, the rule says two work sessions and a meeting.
Not, not for the rules of procedure.
Not for the rules of procedure. Okay.
These rules of procedure say considered twice. So this is being considered twice. But it doesn't change the documents you're talking about, which would be two work sessions and then a vote.
I think we did that because it doesn't, it doesn't impact schools and it doesn't require, it, you know, schools don't have an opportunity to provide input to us about our rules of procedure. This is an internal. Commissioner Burt?
Yeah, I, I don't know if I felt comfortable voting on it this afternoon. I feel like it's not, we're not in emergency status on any of this stuff. And even though it's like our internal procedures, we're a public body. So the public should always have an opportunity to look at what we're doing and have at least that 30 days to provide input. Even though this is likely something that maybe nobody would comment on, I don't think there's ever a time necessarily we should have this quick of a, of a turnaround.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Taylor?
Yeah, I, I was questioning, um, if we're considering it twice, does that mean that, that it's considered twice for, for, I mean, a vote? I mean, I, I don't know. I, I feel like a work session doesn't really count as a, as a consideration. I don't know. I'm, I'm with, I'm with, uh, Commissioner Burt as far as, you know, I, I think we, we consider it and not vote on it today.
I, I just want to flag where that is in your rules of procedure. It's on page 12. It's, it says, you're welcome to vote on it whenever you want. Unless exceptional circumstances exist, any amendments or revisions will be on the agenda for two consecutive meetings, either on the working session or regular meeting agenda or both. A vote may be taken at the second meeting after a second reading. So you can do it today. You don't have to do it today.
So I think it just, I'm just going to say, I think it kind of defies the purpose of it. Like the intention of having it two consecutive, of having two hearings is the time between two hearings, like the two readings. So I think the intention isn't just to kind of have like a checkbox of like, we heard it twice. Like we heard it this morning and we're going to hear it this afternoon. The, the intention, the purpose behind having two readings is the time amount, is it the time between them? So. I still, I don't know if, maybe we clarify that in here because I don't, I, I don't, I'll, I don't think I'll ever necessarily, I can't think of anything that's not emergency that I would ever support. Even like the next day is too much. Like it's like from yesterday to, like if we had a work session yesterday and voting on today, like the intention of this is in particular, is to not do that. To not have the quick turnarounds from talking about it from the first time to voting on it.
I hear you. Um, the work session does count. I, I, so that it does. So.
I agree with that. Work session does count this month.
I know, I know. I got it. Um, I hear you. I had mentally my own concern with it. So, um, I'm more comfortable withholding it to August.
You, you, you can however, change that paragraph B and clarify that right now. So it would be for, I don't know if, if Missy can put it up there? It's on page 12. Um.
Yeah.
Which of the documents are we talking?
I would prefer if we changed wording that it either be three or if it's at a work session one month, it doesn't appear again until the next month. There has to be 30 days in between whatever. So that if it's just two readings, it's a work session one month and it goes on the agenda for the second month, that I'm okay with. Or we change it to three readings so that we make sure that there's 30 days in between. One or the other, um, you know, I just want the 30 days in between. Sorry.
I don't want to go to three months. I don't want to go to three readings. I think it's ridiculous.
It's not three months.
If we have to, I mean, if you go a reading, I mean, it's perfectly fine to have your work session, that's your first reading. You make the changes that you need to make. At your next work session, you have your red line, we can approve it then and we can vote on that following agenda after that work session. We don't have to. We can, we can carry it out further, but I don't want to make the change in our rules that we are going to carry it out, you know, towards essentially 60 days.
No, it's not because we're not 60.
I'm hearing you, I'm hearing Burt, uh, I'm hearing Burt say, hold on a sec. I'm hearing Ms. Burt say that, uh, we go, and maybe I'm hearing you wrong.
Heard it wrong.
Where, um, you have work session, to me it's work session, work session, vote on that.
That's fine. I'm, I'm okay with even work session. And then if there's not a bunch of changes that get made, like after today, like if, if this is it, we don't even have to do it on the work session next month. It could be just an agenda item next, the next Friday meeting. I mean, I, it's literally just like first reading to vote needs to have the 30 days. And I think that's what Patty's get, I, 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 where Patty's mind was at was where I, where I stood too. Was first reading and then 30 days needs to pass before a second reading and vote.
Right.
And, and I don't care how that happens. I don't know what that looks like on the count, like as far as which meetings happen, I don't care.
I've just changed consecutive to two PEC monthly meetings, either on the working session or the regular meeting agenda or both. I think that gives you the timing. Will be on the agenda for two PEC monthly meetings. So that gives you that third, because some of them aren't 30 days apart, so I don't want to say 30 days.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah.
I got that change.
All right, thanks. So report from the Chair, number seven, report from the Chair on reimbursements. DFA's position on Commissioners, Commissioners per diem for meetings. I think this was really covered in the prior discussion, that it'll be an agenda item and, uh, the Commissioners will be attending conferences. And they're all agendas, there are, there is attendance with that and that it's part of our statutory duty to keep up with best practices. Commissioner Burt?
I'm wondering if I could request that we actually get DFA's actual, um, position? Cause I, I've never received DFA's position, only PED's position. Um, and so I'm wondering if there's a way in which we can request an official response from DFA? Not from PED, I don't want PED involved at all. They, they are making up their own stuff. So, um, I'm wondering if I, I don't know if, or I, I mean, I can do it individually is what I'm working on. But I don't know if as a Commission, we can get some kind of response from them, like from someone at DFA to say, honestly, whether we even, I mean, we're following statute already. So putting our statute into rules of procedure is kind of, for me, like just do, we're duplicating anyway. Um, so I'm, my concern is that even though we put in the rules of procedure, PED has said, they don't, they don't care. So, and that, and then they, they're saying that they're interpreting it for DFA, um, on behalf of DFA. So I'm wondering if there's like a more official way to go about it. But also I'm okay not to open that can of worms officially if you are, if, if it's not something you guys think is important as a Commission, I can do it separately.
Who was your career?
I would like to make the request as a Commission, not to have you do it separately. I mean, I don't want to have to go with somebody's interpretation of something else. Let's just get it from a horse's mouth and riding. This is what they want. This is why they want it.
So I'm fine with sending a letter requesting, um, either, I'll, I'll give them two options, to simply reply or if they wish to come and have a discussion about it, then we're fine with that. They can come to one of our work sessions and we can have a discussion about it or they can respond to the letter and if we're okay with the response. But, um, I think this is something that we need as a Commission clarification on. Absolutely.
Is the it just the reimbursement for attending the conferences or is there a broader it?
I believe, so correct me if I'm wrong, I believe the concern really is the attendance of conferences that fall with, fall below the 50 mile range. So that's with, it's less than 50 miles from your home location. It's the reimbursement for those conferences.
Yeah. So, yes, exactly. And specifically the per diem. There will, for some reason PED is okay reimbursing mileage for it, but not the per diem, which doesn't, it, that, it, that's what just doesn't make any sense. So, yeah, clarification on that. I don't know if there's any other like issues or concerns that have come up with things outside of that um, to kind of bundle in. Like if there's anything else that anyone's having trouble with, like submitting and then them reimbursing it wonky or being crazy about it. But, um, I'm trying to think of like other things that they've like randomly been denying in the last couple of months that PED has been, that I don't even think it's DFA. So I don't know if, I'm trying to think. I'll, if, I, I can send an email if I can think of something else.
Yeah. And I'll ask Commissioners that if there's, so I'll, I'll open it up. Yeah, and I'll ask commissioners that if there's, so I'll, I'll open it up. Does, is anyone right now aware of another concern beyond that per diem that falls below the fifty mile limit?
I think I'm, um, I'm, well, I'm definitely confused about this, so, given that we just stated that it is our responsibility in statute to attend conferences to, you know, maintain our knowledge of what's going on, changes, what appears are doing, do we then, I'll use Houston as an example coming up, does that mean that in addition to being reimbursed for my actials at the, you know, Miles Hotel, that I'm going to receive per diem for those days in, and if not, why not? I'm being, I'm being told by statute I'm supposed to go to these things, that's my obligation.
And you're being reimbursed for the expenses of attending that. So my understanding, and I could be wrong, but my understanding with that is similar to my travel here, I have two choices, I take the per diem, or I take my actual expenses, I don't get to do both. So I get the actials, because the per diem wouldn't cover it. So that's my understanding.
And that's what I would welcome their clarification on, because in a sense, I think you should get the ninety-five dollars or whatever it is, for, for the meetings that you are here, and I believe you should receive uh, the reimbursements for your expenses, having to come up here or wherever you have to go. It seems kind of gray.
Because, and, and I hear you, you know.
I hear you, but I raise you this.
Yeah, you know, um.
It'd be, it would, it would just be interesting to have them come here and, I don't know.
I mean, I'm glad to populate that into, as a question, you know, for clarification. I mean, I think we've raised that question, the answer has always been, you get two choices, you know, that's, um, cuz different, you know, legislators don't get two choices. They just get plaid per diem, they have to pay all their expenses out of the per diem.
Way more important than they are.
You know, so that's, um.
Legislators don't get actials?
No, they don't, they're not allowed to.
Gotcha.
They have to, yeah, so it, it's very challenging when they come up here for sixty days to pay for staying here, when, um, a couple of years ago, we had a commissioner that was hell-bent on raising the per diem. And that would have required a statutory change. And the message that was communicated was, please understand that if the per diem gets raised, then the actials go away. So, the commission at that time wasn't fully in support of what that kind of rogue was doing, but when that message came back, it's like, well now, that's not going to be, you know, work all, so we back, you know, that conversation ended, so, yeah, that's, you know, that's part of that discussion of why legislators should be paid. So if there's anything else that, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Ingham.
Okay, I'm really gonna throw something out there. So, we're talking to D F A, would that be the correct, um, entity to clarify the authority of P E D to sweep up all the remaining funds from our two percent?
I'm gonna say probably not, I don't think D F A, that's statute. So, but I don't know if D F A, I don't, someone can clarify that for me, but I don't think D F A weighs in on that. I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Just a thought.
I don't think they do either. Chair Gibson, commissioners, I would ask, um, so it's fine, great that you guys want clarification directly from D F A, I would request that either they come make a presentation so we can record it, or that it's in writing, just so that it will help us communicate with our colleagues here, so that Consuelo isn't in an awkward position.
Well, and I indicated that they'll either respond to us, and if we're satisfied with the written response, then we will, okay, if we're not, then we'll ask them to, to come, and we'll have that. Okay. Are we good? Okay. Reimbursement request for virtual attendance at subcommittees, we've covered that, there'll be, um, there has to be an agenda, and on at least one of them, there'll be an, an attendance noted.
One more, um, is this also reimbursement for our attorney fees? Would that be a?
For what?
For our attorney fees, would this also be an opportunity to, uh, request qualification on? What, when we asked to have Julia go to the conference and was denied, um, I think it might be an opportunity to ask for clarification on that.
Okay, so that, this was gonna come in my report, but I'll tell you now, um, the request has been made, and there will be an amendment to the contract, and, um, Julia's expenses, but Julia will be reimbursed for the next conference in October.
Yay.
So that, um, I was gonna, commissioners know that, so we're, we're okay with that at this point in time, thanks. Um, updates on grants, I don't think we have anything. Nothing's, do you have any additional complaints about grants? Okay. So I think we're at this point in time, oh.
Okay, is this an appropriate time to bring up my concerns about, uh, not applying for that federal grant?
This is, this was, I guess we can, cuz it's a work session, this was more addressing grants that schools are applying for and getting reimbursed for, but I think, um, cuz it's a work session, we have latitude, so, or, I worked with some that always said latitude, so, um, so certainly, you can.
Well, really, all I wanted to do was say that I, I'm very disappointed that we missed the opportunity to, um, apply for a grant that sounded like it was very appropriate for our state, and that, that was um, disappointing to me, I tried my best to rush it through at the end, uh, but with twenty days to do that, and limited resources and, uh, limited authority, it were, became impossible, but I really would like to know, what do we have to do to, um, be aware and to be, and to address those kind of opportunities?
I fully understand your frustration, because, and we've had discussions about this, I think moving forward, I think we have to look at, um, pursuing getting, how, how we get our own grant writer. So that, uh, when, if this becomes available again this cycle. Cuz I don't know if it's gonna be a yearly thing, or it's just a, you know, the last one, um, wasn't a yearly thing. So, uh, I will check into that to see if it's going to come up, uh, sooner, and see what we would need to do to get ourselves a grant writer, so that we can, um, either coordinate with some entity, whether it's, um, N M F A or whoever, uh, to help get this grant, because someone has to house that money. And that's, uh, that's the difficulty, so that, um, we can coordinate this and get on it right away. So I will check to see if it's going to be something that is, um, available next year, or in two years, or what they're, what they're looking at for that, um. I think in addition, and I'm sorry if I didn't, if I, if I, if you said it, and the money that's already there, we have to work on spending that money.
And, and my, I, I, I think that, um, grants become available from different sources.
Right.
And that it will be a, um, a good use of our, our energy to have recognized when grants from other sources become available that are for state opportunities, that we have some ability to address that, that's not, that we don't have to rely on somebody else to address it, and that, that could take that ball, um. I just, I feel like it'd be really appropriate to not let that kind of situation slip again, I'm really disappointed about it.
Yeah, me too, and, you know, once again, I think the, the wrinkle often becomes having to partner with someone because the money has to be housed somewhere, that we don't, we don't have the ability to, so that, we have to get on the ball sooner, so that we're clear on that. Um, so I think that's, you know, something that we absolutely have to keep on top of.
I can imagine there's grants that don't require the matching funds, that, that, that is not a limitation, that there are other opportunities that we need to be aware of, and be able to address when they come up, that's, that's all I'm asking for.
Yeah. And in addition, there's that ten million dollars that N M F A already has, that hasn't been used at this point in time, so what do we have to do to get that money started to be accessed? Commissioner Bauer?
Chair, what, 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 sorry, didn't mean to stammer there, what was the grant, was it a C S P?
The C S P had a separate C S P grant for facilities.
Gotcha.
And this one had a matching fund requirement, and N M F A had the ten million dollars already. So, if N M F A, if we could have gotten an M F A to apply for the grant, we had the matching funds housed there. But there are grants, and when I talk to folks in Chicago, they didn't indicate that there was a matching fund. But then there was, but we, we have ten million dollars that's there, that hasn't been accessed, and could have been used as a match.
Don't wanna make this sound like it, I think it's always good to, like, in my job all the time, I apply to everything, I like, I think it's important. I think that from my experience with that specific grant, and I might be wrong on this, so definitely pushback. A lot of that is, it's like a planning, it's like planning grants, it's, it's not necess, I just wanna make sure no one is thinking that this was like easy money to help build new schools, that's not how that grant works, from my understanding, it, it's not like to build brick and mortar, it's more of supporting schools to develop a plan, like a five-year, you know, plan kind of thing. From my, from my understanding, that's what I've seen from, you know, organizations I've worked for in the past, and we get this grant, and it's like, oh, we wanna build new schools, but you really, it's, it's more of like supporting with developing things, but it's not like, here's five million dollars to build a school in Santa Fe. Um, it, it's not quite like that, so, we should have, yes, we should find ways to use funding, but also, I wanted to make sure, like, a lot of times our C S P grants aren't set up to build like brand-new schools for our schools, which I think, uh, Mr. Ingham, you're probably thinking about that kind of stuff, which would be awesome to have, but.
Well, I'm just gonna say, this one specifically, um, was applicable for construction.
Yeah.
It was specifically set up, so it was, it was a grant that N M F A or was not a bit, uh, aware of. In fact, they were looking at a different grant that they're gonna apply for next year, when I brought it to their attention, it, it was a short fuse, and they didn't have the, it, it, but it was clear to me that the, the deal with this, it was very, um, uh, limited, people could apply for it, it was only, you had to be a state entity, and you had to have this matching funding available, and the indication I was given by the people in Boston was that, yes, we had the opportunity to do this, we needed to hurry to make an application, obviously, but that because we had that ten million dollars, that made us, um, one of the few states that would be able to, to even apply for it. What it felt like to me was they were telling me that, um, if you can get an application in, you probably will get it, and it was for, specifically for construction, I'm just saying.
Thank you, that's helpful for me, because I, I know different organizations I've worked with have been kind of, it's a lot of money to do planning, and then you, you can't actually use it for brick and mortar building construction, so that, that, yeah, so that, that is a disappointment that we.
Now, the federal government, this round, modified that, and we became aware a little late about that. Um, and it's unfortunate, uh, that, cuz that was, I think, uh, you know, ten million dollars isn't gonna go very far, but for a lot of schools, you know, to be able to add portable here, portable there, and things like that, it really, and to me, it was like kind of the seed money to get something going. Commissioner Costasilich?
Was there an overlook on the presence of the grant, or why didn't we know about it earlier?
We knew about it, I'm sorry. And there were conversations that took place. Things just didn't get off as quickly as it should have. And I think on our part, we don't necessarily have anyone who's got eyes on all grants that are available. So maybe it's something we have to look at, cuz there's some, you know, Commissioner Bauer can speak to what it takes to find all these grants. We don't have someone that does that, maybe we, maybe we have to explore, you know, figuring out how to do that. Commissioner Correio?
For a discussion and action later, um, yeah, I think we should hire, we need to have somebody whose weight that is. Because as you said, it's like kids and scholarships, there's so much available, and we need somebody at the high school who understands how to tap in to all of the resources, cuz all this money, people always say, I, I got all this money I wanna give to kids for schools, and no one ever asks. But yeah, I think I would totally, uh, be in favor of having someone whose sole focus is grants, Russ.
Maybe even a consultant that is just aware of that, and keeps up on it on their own, and notifies us when they see something that is legitimate, and then maybe has the expertise to put together the, the grant.
You're right, I think it, I think we need one person that can do both, that can explore the opportunities for grants, make recommendation as to what grants we should be applying for, and then be, have the skill set to write those grants as well, yeah.
Here's, um, for grant writers, how do grant writers get paid? I imagine some of them are staff for nonprofit organizations, or NGOs, or whatever. I'm, I, I have no idea about that world, how do they get paid? Percentage of the grant, commis, yeah?
Chair, Commissioner Correio, typically not, typically not like a percentage of the grant, because the grant is set, usually, most grants, especially federal or state grants, uh, have like a specific, um, indirect cost that is associated with it, so that means like not direct programming that you're spending, like not staff or contracts that you're doing, so it's very limited that you could say like, that indirect cost would cover like grant writer or something like that. So typically, it's a, it's an hourly thing, like other, other, you know, like Julia is for us, it would be like an hourly contract is the typical way, um, you also can put somebody on retainer like you do with, uh, like an attorney, like Julia, Julia is such a great example right now, uh, those are the two options, like, you know, and you, and sometimes you, uh, a lot of schools use different organizations, and I'd be happy to. different organizations, and I'd be happy to share a couple organizations that work with nonprofits or institutions like us. Um, and you, you know, start out with, you know, $50,000 for them to do, to do exploration work, and then uh, as they, we move forward, then that would be like an hourly process, you know, that you would, you would pay them for the, the work on a grant.
I like that idea. Somebody on retainer to find things, when they find them, they get paid hourly to write them.
Okay, so I, I know, I know some schools that have hired grant writers, and it hasn't been as successful as they had hoped. But I think you also have to put the guardrails in that contract so that, you know, productivity is being monitored, not, oh, yeah, we hired this grant writer, and yeah, this month she's saying, no, I didn't find any grants to, to do for you. So, you know, there's, I, I think we have the ability to establish those guardrails so that there's, it's, it's worth our while. Yeah. Okay, so that's something we'll put on for action next month. And we have to budget for that and know, you know, the process that we would have to undertake to get that person, depending on the money that's, you know, that's, yeah, the money that's there. Director?
Yes, this is a question for Commissioner Ingham. What is the name of the grant, the, the specific grant that you're talking about? And if you have some sort of email that you could forward, that would be helpful. I'd really like to see it. Thank you.
It's a CSP grant. It's on the Fed, federal website. It's a CSP.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking there right now.
Grant. Yeah. I think the deadline was July 9th. July 23rd, okay. I'm sorry.
It's Commissioner Chair Gibson, Commissioner Stewart, uh, Ingham, sorry, and Director Chavez. It's the Facility Incentive Grant. The CSP facility incentive. And yes, it does tie very well to the current CSP grant that we have. They go hand in hand.
But what they told me was that you could not apply for it, your organization, because you had the CSP grant that we would have.
We can.
But that, 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 there, there was, there's a lot of, we're, we're not all understanding correctly, because I asked specifically that. And they said, no, at least the lady at Bo, in Boston that did the presentation or the Department of Education told me that, that you would not be able to do it because you already had the, the main grant, and that we would have to have somebody, and you would have to have the money in your possession in order to do it, the, the matching fund. So I could be wrong, obviously. I really moved to this deal. I, I just was, it, it, if, it just feels like to me, we need to be ready for this. That's, that's all I'm asking to be.
The director for the, the lady at the, with the feds that oversees the entire CSP grant, she spoke to our, our grant director when we were there in Boston, and she told him directly that it, they go hand in hand together, that that's something that we should.
So, but I think the challenge, because I, and maybe I'm misunderstanding, but like you couldn't use the money from this CSP grant as the matching fund for this. So I think the challenge would have been for you to already have the matching funds to be able to apply. Because when I was in Chicago, Jim Gunnar had said, oh, no, no, you have to use PCS and M for this. It's, it's a, if it's a perfect match. Once again, I was completely unaware. No one ever mentioned the matching fund component of it. So that really meant that only NMFA could partner for that because they already had that money.
That's correct.
Yeah.
And so it would not allow you to do it unless somehow you had access to that, and, and that $10 million that's in NMFA possession already. So that's what we did. We, we came to the conclusion that it had to be NMFA to apply for it, and it would have been a very difficult, um, challenge to get it done. I read the application pretty carefully, but it would have, uh, it was possible, but it required NMFA to be ready to jump on a, a real specific deal, and they, they probably don't have resources to do that.
Commissioner Manus?
I just wanted to chime in. I think, um, a little bit of us trying to find a grant writer seems to be spinning our wheels a little bit. I think if, if we were to, uh, work with PCS and M on initiatives that they're already doing and try to, um, partner with them, I think we're gonna be better off than us trying to go out and, uh, contract with a grant writer and try to do all that, because I think PCS and M, they're already equipped to be able to uh, look at these grants, and I don't believe that that's our job as a commission to be facilitating the grants. I believe that we can support it, we can, um, promote it, but I don't believe that that's our role is to be finding grants or to be, uh, working on grants or to be, um, completing grants. I think that that's where we can establish good partnerships with already, uh, strong uh, organizations like PCS and M that already has the manpower and the individuals in place for grants.
Commissioner Brower?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, Commissioner Manus, I, I hear your point on that. I think that, for me, I see this as part of technical assistance to schools and things of that nature. So I do think there is a through line in some ways. I don't think our main core, uh, work is to support schools and, you know, level-setting their, their budgets or, uh, taking on work from other agencies that are in the state. I do think there's opportunities for us, at least to support through technical assistance and opportunities. So I think that, uh, having, having someone, uh, support and, uh, ensuring that we know that there are grants available that impact our schools and impact charter schools' health and wellness across the state, including organizations that, to do this work too. I think, um, if we, I see that as potentially technical assistance, not to get into the weeds and not to have any, uh, what do you call, any disagreement with what you just shared. I, I agree with you on that. I just think that there are some opportunities that we could maybe explore and, and kind of think through over the next couple of months, for sure.
Commissioner Corio?
I would just say we have this on the work session for next month, so it's a good time to get into the weeds.
Yeah, it's on, uh, we put on the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay. Subcommittee updates. Uh, I don't think we have anything for authorizer software updates at this point in time. Correct? I don't think that Subcommittee has met, no, because I'm on that. Unless you met without me.
Chair Gibson, um, no, the Subcommittee has not met. I think I'm the person that is the staff, uh, liaison to the PEC Subcommittee on the, um, on it. But we, Charter Schools Division continues to meet with Epicenter, and we're making progress in setting it up, and our goal is to have it ready to receive renewal applications. This week, when we met with Epicenter, we discussed, um, and we are polling the renewal schools to find out uh, which dates work best for them to have two different training sessions plus some office hours, so that they can learn how to upload their renewal application.
So I, I'm gonna say, at least for me, I think an update from the Epicenter folks once the school year really starts, so that we have a status as to where we are in terms of the, the full rollout. That would be, I don't think the Subcommittee necessarily needs to meet, but I think the Commission needs to be, um, kept up to date as to, you know, just a status report from them.
You tell me which month and I will arrange it.
So I am correct in understanding that all schools are being, starting their school year with this, correct?
Well, we're populating it, but we are triaging how information, um, is expected to come in through Epicenter. So right now, we're adding all chart, all state charter schools, their head administrators, et cetera. We're setting them up in the system. But the very first time that we receive something from schools would be the renewal applications, uh, for the 20 renewing schools and the, and I, and the assurances. We just talked about the assurances this week, um, because those are the things that are due first. So a school that doesn't fall into one of those categories, that isn't on the new performance framework or isn't up for renewal, might not interface with, um, Epicenter until such time it makes sense that they would need to upload something, or there's, there's a clear purpose for their interface. We, we wanted to, as, um, perhaps Commissioner Burt remembers, we, we didn't want to overwhelm the schools um, by asking for a ton of things to be uploaded at the beginning of this school year. So that's why we're taking the triage approach.
So I think September is reasonable.
Okay.
For that, Commissioner Beck?
Can you remind me who's on the Subcommittee? I don't know. I might be.
I think it's the, the people that, without looking at it, the people that were on the RFP Committee plus Commissioner Burt and myself. Uh, correct?
So we have a list of who, which committee in folder.
But I could be wrong. I don't have the folder open.
Okay, I'm looking right now. So the most recent.
The last time I think I looked, some of those weren't up to date.
So the most recent is updated on 5/30/2024. You can check to see if that aligns with what's on the website. But it says that the RF, oh, there was an RFP.
Correct. But now there's no longer the RFP Committee. There's the Subcommittee for Epicenter, and I know Commissioner Burt and I, and, um, positive Commissioner Manus is on that. But beyond the three of us, that's where I'm a little on. He was, and so was Alan. No, no. No, that I know for sure. The Performance Framework Committee didn't roll into the Epicenter rollout committee. That.
So.
See if I can get some per diem for that.
I think we need to edit the Subcommittee list and
Get that to you.
Remove the RFP, because that's not gonna be repeated. Let's not all listen.
Okay. So the Budget Subcommittee has not met, but I'm gonna say the Budget Subcommittee has to meet post haste. Oh, the logo, sorry. I, I forgot the logo. I know. Um, Commissioner Beck?
Yeah, I looked at it. I, I had a problem with running two, that the New Mexico Public Education was below it. I like it on it. Which three, four, five, and six have that? Um, I really personally like five, because it's not so busy. Uh, we were talking about five and six. I think six, when I look at it again, looks almost a little too busy going on. I think five with the graduation cap in the books, um, uh, is more simple and more, um, not, not quite as busy. That's my opinion. I like five, except there's quite an emphasis in five on the nuclear atomic thing. I mean, as much as I love that little thing from The Simpsons, I know that wasn't. Oh, I'm three. Hold on, I, never mind. No, uh, three. Oh, yeah, three, I stayed. I was looking through the wrong thing. No, yeah, uh, five. I have five as my start, the super one. I like five the best of them. I like six, if, I don't understand on any of these, why there's a Zia, E, M, A, Zia. If we could put the cap.
It, it doesn't look good without the Zia in the middle. I mean, I, I design, I went through and some of these took, they were extra design work uh, on me, and I went and played around with a different, uh, a couple different versions, and it just, it, it looks better with something in the center.
Oh, no, something has to cap in. What if you put the cap in where the second?
That's a little, that's a little bit more effort beyond, beyond what I, I already put in, so. That I did not mess with.
You get a contract to. And by the way, Katie, thanks for your work on this. This is, he's really cool, really cool.
Appreciate this. So, um, in order, in order for us to get permission to use the Zia symbol, I've asked two things. I went online to just make a submission for the use of the Zia, and, um, the application process does ask what's your, um, donation going to be? And they do, they also asked for what the design was going to be. So I didn't go any further with the application. Number one, we don't have capacity to make the donation. Um, I asked because I believe there's gotta be some state permission for the state, for a state entity to use the Zia symbol, because there isn't a state entity that doesn't somehow use it. So, but I'm trying to be thoughtful about this and not just make that assumption. I haven't been able to find an answer yet as to whether there is, uh, permission for a state entity to use it. So the next, um, suggestion was to send a request to the governor of Zia to use it, but I wanted to have what we wanted to use so that they were clear as what we were going to do, not just a general, can we use the symbol? And they not know what we're using it for. So, um, I think what we need to do is decide what we want to use, and then I can move forward for asking permission to use it. Commissioner Corio?
I, can't we just be grandfathered into the state using the symbol?
I haven't gotten an answer that there is a state permission for it. I don't have an answer to that. So I'm making an assumption that there should be, but you know what happens when you assume, so.
But it's on the flag.
I know, but they may have gotten permission to use it on the flag.
Not in general.
But not for just general permission for any state entity to use the symbol, and it's granted. I believe that probably does exist, but I don't know where to find the answer to that. Uh, the director asked, um, Department of Indian Ed if they knew, and they didn't have an answer.
In our Office of, um, General Counsel, but when I
General Counsel.
Assistant Secretary for Indian Ed, she said, write a letter to the governor.
Yeah. So I, you know, someone wants to direct me as to where I might go to get clarification on that. I'm fine with doing it, but.
It'd be good to have which logo is gonna be on, so they could see it.
Absolutely. That I want to be clear with, yeah. Uh, Commissioner Burt?
Um, I like two and five as well. I actually think I would like five the most if there wasn't the cap in the middle of it, like if there's just empty inside there. Um, because I do think too, I'm, I like the ones that are a little bit simpler. Um, but I also think like I, I'm trying to remember, I do think, I, I don't think when you're not, um, I believe, just because I have had, I, I've encountered this before with using the Zia symbol. I think if you're not a for-profit entity, I think it's less of a faux pas to not, you know, get permission. I think it's a respect thing, um, when you are, when it is not-for-profit. I think it's a respect thing um when you are, when it is not for profit. Um so I do think, I think it is just an email to the governor um that you can send or fill out that form and put zero as the amount to donate. Um and I think you can explain that, you know, we're, we're a state commission and we won't be profiting off of this. I think, and this is where I might be wrong, because it's mostly in just my memory and I tried to like Google it real quick and I couldn't find anything right away. But I, I, one of the things I remember from submitting something to the Zia Pueblo before was they actually will not approve, like they won't give um their approval if there is something in the middle of the center. So i- in their culture, that the center is actually meaningful, like the emptiness of it. And so if we do go through them, that's, I feel like that's something that they might tell us to do anyway or that they won't, you know, give the respectful, like yes, you, you know, you can use a Zia symbol, but there's, there's like actual meaning behind the, the vacancy of uh or the absence of anything in the middle of the Zia symbol. So I think just removing, making sure that there's nothing in the middle is important.
Okay, thanks for that, but um the application I, I was filling out was specifically for a nonprofit.
Okay, cool, yeah, I, I feel like, I mean, I don't think it's um, I don't feel like it would be inappropriate as this body because I don't think we have a mechanism, it's, we actually cannot donate. That's against the law to donate. So um I feel like just putting zero and, but I, I, I totally see where you're coming from, from waiting to get what we decide before doing it, that totally makes sense. Um but I, I feel okay as a respect thing to send it in through that form and, and just put that there, there, that we're zero. I think I'm, I don't think it's going to be something that they're not used to having to see of like a governmental agency that can't provide a donation. But I do think there's an element of respect in.
I mean, I think that's important if we're going to submit, um, yeah. So KT, is it possible to take that cap out?
Or number two is great too. Number two, I, I really like number two as my, that was actually my favorite one. And it doesn't, it just happens to not have anything in the middle anyway.
Yeah, that's true.
But I think they're all really pretty, I love the colors in them.
I, I was a fan of simplicity of two as well.
I mean, I like, I, and I agree, I like two a lot. Except I think I would like it better if it could say New Mexico Public Education Commission within that outer circle, not the commission being separately on the bottom because then you've just got that, I think it simplifies it a little bit more and it's just housed all in that one piece.
Yeah, I, I agree with uh uh Chuck Gibson. I, I like the idea of having it um within the circle, so it's not extraneous to the circle. So I would love to see it n- number two uh with um the New Mexico P E C in, in the circle.
Yeah, you just have to expand out that outer circle and I'm talking.
Like the number four, the number four outer circle, like something without a lot. Um, I think, like the number four circle doesn't have a bunch in it other than the words, I like that.
Yep, yeah, yeah, I was just thinking if the outer circle was expanded just a little bit and yeah, and just.
Or number six or number fives.
Was added in and nothing else.
Like it.
Yeah.
What can we eliminate?
Number six and five circles are actually great too.
Well, I mean, I think um hearing from what people have said, uh it's between two and five that the others are way too busy, the cap would have to be removed out of five, but I still like the, the simplicity of two. You know, that's my, two is my number one.
My hangup was the New Mexico Public Education below it, not within it, that was my hangup.
I think if we're not in a rush, I could probably uh take back your feedback and make some modifications and uh if we like the uh the simplicity of two, but wanted uh the words to be surrounding it, then that shouldn't be an issue.
Yeah.
It'll just mean that we're going to have to review this again in a month, but I don't think we're in a big rush.
No, I don't think we are either and I think if we're good with number two and um whatever modifications, if you could, whenever you get a chance, send it to me. I can put it on the application as this is what's being proposed.
Okay.
KT, can you change that second Zia, like the little, the door that has the second Zia? Since you're going to go in here and do more, uh maybe put like a graduation cap there instead of a second Zia?
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's going to be exactly uh exactly equivalent to this, but I'll make sure that we um that there's some of the other educational elements are present.
Well, okay, thanks. Commissioner Brower?
One literal thing I was going to say uh was to take that extra, take that door out and put something like the cap.
Yeah.
I think that's good. Um and then I love the idea about having, I mean, it just is, having the words around the outside rep- it's very representative of the seal as well, so there's, there's balance, there's, there's parallel structure.
Yeah.
Um and then uh KT, I don't know if this is possible, but I know there's like, I, I do like having a little bit of something around the, the outside perimeter as well with the New Mexico Public Education Commission. All the examples have wheat, but I think since we're corn, we're, we're a corn state, like if there's a way to put some corn in there, that's just an extra fluff. I'm not going to die on that hill, but if we wanted to put something around, I think corn makes more representative uh truth there.
Got it.
The number five, like um outer circle?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
The number five outer circle is is kind of, it has like some things, but it's not too much. Like it's decorative but not too busy.
Throw some corn in there.
Yeah. So, I mean, really, thank you so much for all, all of your work on this. I, I really do appreciate it and, yeah.
We're in the bill to Carina.
Okay, thanks.
Director.
I don't know if Commissioner Caddio had something to say, but um did you get the answer that you needed, Commissioner Gibson, on how you all would use this? I think that you might want it um on your webpage, maybe in, I'll let you guys talk about that.
Better had all that stuff.
That I heard that discussion.
These cards?
Well, this is going to be used on everything related to, it's going to be on, yeah, everything related to the commission is using this symbol as opposed to the PED symbol. Yeah.
So just a technical question regarding that, so all of the applications, all the uniforms, everything will replace the state seal with this. I presume that's a technical change and um we should note the date on the files, but that they don't have to be voted on when we do that change. Thank you.
Okay. Policy Subcommittee has not met. As we are on that. Food and Beverage Service has not met, correct? So the Legislative Subcommittee has met. We met, uh it's Commissioner Ingham, Commissioner Correa and myself. We met July fifth. And we had a pretty robust discussion on our legislative priorities. We took the legislative priorities that have already been identified, which are transportation, two percent. That, yeah, that's, what's the fourth one? Remind me of the fourth one. Transportation, oh, um capital, uh capital money for facilities, sorry. So, and the commission being a standalone commission. So those are the four issues that have been identified by the commission and we have prioritized those and making the recommendation to the commission for those priorities. And our number one priority has been identified as the commission being a standalone commission. We did, we did discuss it.
So in order of, I have. What I have here that we decided on, a lot of importance, was standalone number one, then transportation, then capital charter money to bond and then two percent. Okay.
The thought is that um efforts and energies by the commission need to go into the standalone commission uh and certainly looking for partners that will support us. We made inroads with that discussion the last session when the issue of the cabinet secretary position being eliminated and going back to the state school board. Because that issue brought up the deep concern of what happens to the support for charters if that happens. The notion that a school board is going to be able to deal with all of the issues of traditional schools and what the state school board would do and also to be able to adequately support charters as a charter authorizer. It's not going to happen. Someone's going to lose and the loss is going to be on the charter school side. And the priorities will be with the traditional school districts. And there were a number of legislators who brought up, well, we know what good support has been offered to charter schools and we want to do the same thing for traditional schools. And we all know that the authorizing world is deeply different than the world of traditional public schools. And what we can do in terms of support, support and monitoring of charters is very different because of that contract than what a traditional school board can do with their schools. So the notion isn't understood. Those legislators, and through conversations that I know Commissioner Ingham had a lot of conversations, I had a lot of conversations, we had mutual conversations with some legislators. There was a complete lack of awareness of what we can do as an authorizer as opposed to what a school board can do. But there was support for the idea of separating out. So I think that's something that uh we have to, and the Subcommittee agreed that that was something that we needed to um to move on and prioritize. Not to say that those other issues aren't very important, but that there has to be partnership with other organizations and in some of those areas, as example, the two percent. That voice has to come very much from charter schools themselves about the transparency of what's happening with that two percent. Because we've been, we've been talking about it a lot for a long time. But that momentum really has to come because that money is coming directly from them. So that really has to, they have to step up and we'll certainly support in any way that we can, but that momentum really has to come from the charter schools uh themselves. I think the facilities and the monies for facilities also is a part, very much a partnership um effort that, that we have to create a plan for how we're going to help support that because it is um also critically important that our schools get in facilities that are appropriate and safe and not just sandwiched in a strip mall because that's the only thing they could find. Commissioners?
This is going to be, we can um vote to decide on legislative action and prioritize anything else and have develop an action plan next during our agenda, our meeting agenda.
The Subcommittee, the Subcommittee will create the, then we'll be tasked with the, the how to.
The action plan, okay, alright.
And we'll report back to the commission on that. So any questions? Okay. Reports from liaisons, uh the L E S C is meeting next week, I'll be there in Los Alamos. I missed the Finance Committee because of our change in this date. I was going to go on my way up here, they were meeting in Socorro, but because of that lag day, I, it just didn't fit in, so I was not able to, to make it. Uh they are on the L E S C agenda, talking about math and what to do about math and the last one I attended, they came up, I don't remember who presented, but there was a presentation on a whole new math, math program. And the question that came up was, why do we need a new program? Why can't we just work to support the math programs that we already have? So I'm interested to see what their priorities are going to be with um supporting math. Indian Education Advisory Council?
I'm happy to announce we will be meeting the twenty ninth of this month. Um, I attended June's and that was, well, no, I missed June's. Um, but I attended the conference with them and we had the meeting. They said ten, I was there at eight, so we missed, yeah. So I will be down twenty ninth and I will have a report next month, thank you.
Thank you. Do they meet in person or is it a Zoom meeting? Or both, is it?
Both, yeah, both, I, I think the next one will be a Zoom meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks. Public School Capital Atley?
So I think I reported on the last meeting in uh June was the last meeting before the, end of the fiscal year and it was a very full agenda that was in my mind too full, it was approving many, many projects. And so I did provide some pushback on that because it was, it was, I mean, overwhelming, a number. And this, I'm going to be attending the P S C O C meeting on Tuesday next week and the agenda is not near as full and we only have four projects and I've reviewed them, they're, you know, I could get into specifics, but I think that there um, there's opportunities for um us to be a little more, or me to be a little more vocal about charter school needs and, and abilities for charter schools to apply for these. Um, and I received a um a phone call from Eric at.
Gana from J. Paul Taylor?
Yes, about wanting to replicate and I think I referred him to one of you guys that had been working on the Performance Framework or, or, I can't remember, anyway, I referred him to somebody other than me. As far as that goes, but he was interested in applying to the P S C O C for money to do that replication. And so I don't, I didn't really know how that was going to work out, but I, I encouraged him to keep the ball rolling and to, to make a uh if, I, I referred him to P S F A to uh have the procedure that he would, he would go to, to, to make that application, but I thought we had made some specific um provision for replication in our rules, right? Is that correct? Is that correct?
There's an, so there's an amendment request that would have to be done. My understanding was it was just a second site. Am I incorrect in that? No. So it's, yeah, he's, he's looking, isn't it across the street? I thought he was looking at the lot across the street, she's on the board.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
I thought it was, and, and maybe he doesn't have the location, but I thought it was just the lot like across the street.
There, we as the board in the school are having conversations about replication, but looking at different sites in the East Mesa, up on the East Mesa.
Oh, okay.
Also Messia, he went and looked at, at another facility in Messia.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, so I, I thought it was, so it is just a second location. If the amendment request would be for a second location.
Right, the discussion is do we replicate the K through five? Do we replicate K through eight? Do we have K through fives that feed into the six through eight, only one?
Yeah, but there's a distinction between replication and second location.
Based on where, if it's located in the same district.
Right.
Yep.
Okay.
Any case, we have a meeting on Tuesday and it should be, and we're, we're, our AMS Subcommittee has, is not meeting as often as we used to meet, but I'm going to have to be the chair for the next one on the seventh of August. Which is very intimidating for yours truly.
Thanks. School Boards Association? Oh, I'm sorry, NIPSA?
We have not met since our last meeting. The annual meeting is going to be our next week. So what I reported on last month was, was whenever we had met, we haven't met since, since our meeting last month.
Okay, thanks so much. School Boards Association?
Communication with Joe, we need to decide for the end of November, December conference, what we want to present. And then he can take it, we'll go to, oh, go to their board and do all that. But we, we do decide that whether it's going to be performance framework, innovation or whatever it is. How do we want to go about deciding that for us?
We would have to have an agenda item and.
Let's put it down, let's put it on a work session.
Okay.
For next time.
So do we have a date that submissions have to be made by?
No, they just passed, they just had their July conference. And I'll find that out. We're, we're in good shape on that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright. Library Commission?
We have not met and I have no report.
Thanks. And we've. Sorry, the item H is for commissioners to simply offer input into lessons learned from the Charter School Conference in Boston? Mr. Ingham?
I'm just going to say I was really impressed and very, uh, I was very engaged in that. I have to say there are so many opportunities to understand the intricacies of the charter school movement that was portrayed there. I, it, it is very difficult to assimilate all that information in a, in such a concise time. But I did dig specifically that one from the, um, the US Department of Education being very informative. And there was another one that was really, and I'm, I'm, uh, I, I need to go back and review it, but there, there was several of the sessions that were really, really impactful to me. I did also want to say thank you so much to Karina and her staff for the, the, our school conference that we did here in Albuquerque. It was also very well done and I just want to say thank you.
Commissioner Burt and then Commissioner Manus.
Yeah, I mean definitely similar to Commissioner Ingham. It's a, there's really good opportunities there. And I feel like there, the thing I like going to it is I can see where there's innovation taking places in other states that people are thinking outside the box. And it like helps expand your mind a little bit more as to the possibilities of what a charter school could look like. But also I think it gives validation to some things that we're already doing very well. And I think that's something that really came to me this last one too is there's a couple of different sessions I went to that I was like, oh, we're already ahead of this. Like they're trying to convince people that it's a good idea. And we already, we're, we're already down that pathway. So I do think it also kind of validates the good things that we're up to already. So there was one, I, I went to a session about measuring, rethinking how we measure school quality, which I thought was going to be, you know, like really informative. But actually that's one where I feel like we are the furthest ahead. Actually, like they were trying to convince people to really look at mission goals, to, to add mission goals to, to people's, you know, to, to charter schools accountability measurements. So I thought that was really cool. The other thing I saw in that though, that was very interesting that I, I wrote down because I thought it was just fascinating is in that, in, in that particular session, they, they did a lot of talking about some national surveys they sent out to families. And I've always thought that there's a lot of times a big disconnect between what families in New Mexico want versus what people in Santa Fe do with policy and do with, you know, different ways in which they try to control charters. And one of the things that I thought was interesting is they really did talk about, you know, looking at as a literacy and numeracy being the number one, like it has to continue being number one, which I think as a commission, we've, we've reinforced as well. But one of the stats that they, um, some of the stats that they put were something like just fascinating. And one of the things that they, um, found was that, you know, we, we as schools, we tend to look at growth over proficiency, you know, we tend to value that as, as a quality school measurement. But actually when they surveyed families, eighty percent of families picked proficiency as a quality measure over growth. So which, which actually makes sense, like when you take a step back, like, yeah, that's what a family is. They are going to look at that. They're like, I want my kid to be proficient. So just, I thought that was a fascinating, a, a really fascinating stat that they found. And, and just a reminder to like, that we're also representing families, you know, choosing schools as well. Um, the other thing I wanted to talk about was, um, there was a lot of good information about culturally, um, relevant teaching. And there were some schools in that, that were doing like really, um, the way in which I, I feel like this is one thing that schools hear that they need to be culturally relevant or they need to, you know, do the, to, to make an inclusive environment. But it's like, just go do that. And I think that's, this was actually a session in which the practical, the practical skills that are needed and the processes that schools should create in order to do that would be really meaningful to a school. So I do want to just encourage, like, I think that would have been a great, any, any school who is, who's struggling on like, how do I, how does it actually look to be culturally relevant and responsive? There were some really good ideas about building in your processes, feedback from the students, from the families about your policies. And that's actually like the best way to tackle cultural relevancy and, and actual inclusivity. The other thing I, I wrote down that I just want to leave with, because I think for me it was like the biggest, not aha moment, but I feel like it's something that like I've, we kind of talk about, but I, I'd never heard it this way. You know, we talk a lot about what families are, are asking for, right? And I do think when you listen to families, they do talk a lot about like the soft skills, about the community of, of a school, about the extracurriculars of a school, about the environment the school's at. And I think, you know, we'll take that as like, oh, okay, that's what families are wanting. But this was something that they talked about that really sunk into me is we hear families talking about that kind of stuff. Because, and this is the quote I wrote for, wrote down, families don't ask for academic success. They expect that. They expect that. So that's why we don't hear, you know, like if we're thinking about like, oh, well, we don't really hear families coming up and saying, we want numeracy, we want literacy, like they do want that. We don't hear about it because they're expecting that to already be happening. They don't think they need to ask for that. Um, so that when we hear about those things that families are wanting in schools, it's in addition to the basics, right? So just a remind, I think we, we talk about that, but just the way that they kind of laid it out there felt so good for me because I'm like, that make, yes, that makes sense, right? So families don't ask for academic success, they expect that. So just like keeping that in the back of my mind. And I hope that's something that you all kind of, I don't know if it gave any, you know, if it's an aha moment for any of you guys, but it felt good. Like it made sense to hear that put that way. Yeah, lots of really great schools to let, to learn from and, um, some cra- really crazy good things happening across the country in the charter school sector. There was one documentary I actually watched after that was recommended from the conference called Crosstown High School. It's a charter school in Memphis, Tennessee that is all about project-based learning. And I know that that's something that we've talked a lot about, how to quantify and, and hold accountable project-based learning when that's a school, what the school's, you know, model is. And it was fascinating, is really fascinating. So if you're interested in like project-based learning, what that looks like in a school, it was a really, really creative, interesting way. And a really cool documentary, I mean, it's just a really well-done documentary. So Crosstown High School in Memphis, Tennessee, if anyone's interested, is great.
Did you say the name of the school again?
Yeah, it's a Crosstown, like C R O S S Town High School. And it's in Memphis, Tennessee. And there's a documentary about them. It's great, it, it was really, really interesting. So yeah, I, it was hosted well, Boston's great. The hos- the hospitality was just wonderful. And it's always great that those, that New Mexico PCSNM, getting everyone together for New Mexico all in one room is always a, a really cool part of the conference. So glad that they do that.
Thanks. Commissioner Manus, your hands down, it had been up, are you?
I, I figured you were going to, you were already going to call on me, so I already took it down. It, it's hard to go after Becca because she, she said everything so well. But I, I, I think the three of us, we all attended very different sessions. So the sessions that I particularly focused on whenever I was, I was thinking of the, the most positive sessions. Actually, the very last session of the conference was my favorite session of the conference. And I wish they would have put them, uh, you know, on Monday or Tuesday because that session, why I liked it so much is because they, they said they were talking about stuff that they, they had kind of like introduced at the Austin conference. I didn't get to attend their session at the Austin conference. But they started by giving a, a very brief history of the charter school movement. And I liked that they, they introduced things that, um, that even probably doesn't even come top of mind if you hadn't been really in the charter school movement. And kind of why they did that is because they wanted to say, okay, this is where we came from. And not to forget those things. So I really liked hearing a little bit of the history of the charter school movement that they brought into place. The second thing that I liked about it is they were specifically focused on how they can integrate academic skills while also making improvements to their community, to their state and to the world. So they were specifically focused on service learning. And they really focused on different ways in which their school and the different schools they had been at over the last twenty or so years, how they've been able to improve their community while also helping the students gain academic skills through those community projects. So one they had, they had talked about is how they had students in their elementary school write letters to the city council and taught them about, they included writing skills in that. They also included different aspects of why it would be important to fund a green space for the, for the school. It was a, it was this area that it was basically just like a dump, a block or two away from the school. And so they had, they had introduced that. And then they had talked about how some of the students that they're, they're working with, they actually got to work with some of their state legislators on drafting education legislation. And so that's going to be brought up in their, their state legislature this next year. And so it was just very, very interesting, the way they went about it. Talking about integrating that academic skills with real life experiences that the students could take away from, from that. And so I, I just really liked that because I think that's super important and we don't get enough of that in our education. I, I, I would have loved to been able to, to do something like that in my high school or even middle school experience to be able to integrate some of those real, real world, real life experiences and, and how you can make a difference. The thing that, that they kept on saying, uh, like the, the way that you make a difference, you start with, you know, I am, I can make a difference, right? And so they teach that to these kids at a very young age, you know, kindergarten, elementary, and even the kindergarteners, right? They're, they're teaching them that they can make a difference and that they can actually be the change that they want to see. So I, I really just felt, uh, felt a strong connection with that, that particular session. I also attended some, um, mental health, behavioral health, specifically focused on how one was like re-engaging the disengaged student. That was also on the last day that they, they provided some different case scenarios on how a student is disengaged and ways in which you could get them back engaged. The presenter, she had a, had really good slides to go with that and some really good information on kind of like steps or protocols that you could put into place if you're trying to re-engage a disengaged student. And I think, right, at some point throughout your academic career, you're probably at, you know, the, the, the primary grades. A student is going to become disengaged at some point in one way or another. And some are more disengaged than others. But it really kind of hit home on some of those ways in which, which teachers and administrators can try to re-engage those really significantly disengaged students. And I, I just, I enjoyed that session. And I attended some other technology, um, technology and mental health. Our keynote speaker on Monday talked about technology, specifically AI, talked about chat GPT. I think there, um, you know, I have some mixed feelings in regards to kind of the, the things that were presented as far as like, uh, do I necessarily agree with that or think that's true? But it was, I think the, the overall takeaway or there are some considerations that we all have to be aware of as this technology is changing. And how we as, as educators and involved in the education space that we have to adapt and ensure that our students don't significantly fall behind because they're relying on some type of technology. So it, it was really interesting to, to hear that. Um, so it, it was really interesting to, to hear that. Um, I attended a, another session on affirming the value of assessment and accountability. Um, I, I wasn't as big of a fan of that. It seemed like it was kind of canned. Uh, like they were very rehearsed in a way. And that, that was one session that I, I was hoping for more because they were, they were trying to include information about like SAT, ACT, um, these standardized assessments. And I was hoping to get some, uh, some more information, but I just didn't really feel like it was as, as good as it could have been. They didn't have any slides and didn't, didn't, it didn't really seem like while they were prepared, it didn't seem like the way that they rehearsed it was, was that strong. So overall, I think the, the conference was a, was a good experience. Uh, I enjoyed it. I think gained a lot of information. Um, the, I guess the big thing for me is maybe, um, being able to take some of the, the things from the conference and, uh, use it to help schools, uh, or help, help other, uh, individuals in the education space. That's where I, attending, uh, the National Charter School Conference last year, I felt like I got a little bit more that we could actually like meet that we could grab onto. Uh, this time it was more maybe like personal edification on, um, things to think about, but maybe not necessarily, uh, things that we might be able to implement. Thanks.
Thanks. Thanks so much. So Commissioners, I'm going to ask, um, take a 15-minute break and we can go into the regular meeting and we should be able to be done fairly quickly.